...to, I guess, a format that was used at various times in the past but hasn't been in recent years, to have a workshop session of the Board of Ed for one of our two meetings a month which would cover long-term planning, strategic plan amendments, and evaluations and assessments of how the school system's doing to guide us in perhaps changes and amendments that should be made to existing plans. So this is, so tonight's meeting, we're not going to be taking any votes on any items. Those will be work items that will be at the work meetings. We have a meeting, I guess, next Tuesday. We'll be getting presentations and having board discussions with the people who bring us up to speed on things. So at this point, I would turn it over to Superintendent Adamowski and we'll proceed.
Thank you very much. And I just want to start by thanking the members of the Board for embracing this format. We are, as we head toward revision of the Strategic Operating Plan and all the important strategies that will involve that, I think you're going to find that there is going to be an increased need to look at big items in depth, right? And we have such a big item tonight. In our Strategic Operating Plan, you know, we have an overall goal of closing the achievement gap. Now, I suspect that when we're done in revising the plan, we are going to have several large goals, but that will continue to be one of them. And I think what motivates this presentation tonight and the thought and work that has gone into it is needing to have a set of assessments which can in fact measure our progress on the goals we are setting. Right now, we do not have a good way of measuring the closure of the achievement gap. And we need, we will need to have that in place. I want to introduce Dr. Michael Connor, our Chief Academic Officer, and Diane Filardo, who is our assessment, testing assessment, everything evaluation coordinator. And the objective tonight of their presentation is to review with you a comprehensive district assessment plan. Now, this is very important. And in many school districts, this is a plan that is approved annually by the Board of Education because you want to be at a point where we have the assessments necessary to measure our goals, but we're not doing too much testing. And that all the testing that we are doing is important and done for a reason. So if we look back at the Norwalk experience over the last several years, we've had kind of assessment by accretion, right? You know, we've added different assessments each year as things have changed or developed, not much thought to dropping others, and yet particularly in grades four through 11, we do not have the right assessments in place to measure what we need to measure. So we have a twofold purpose tonight. One is to review with you the recommended assessment plan for 15, 16. I would like you on an annual basis to approve the assessment plan every year. I'm also going to be asking you to approve a professional development plan every year, which our PDEC will generate. And under normal circumstances, that will be done in August or September as the school year begins so that everyone can plan adequately. But for tonight, we're going to take this from where we are and where we need to go. Second part of this presentation will involve a pilot on one of the needed assessments, probably the most important assessment that we need to have, and how we can approach that this year so that we can be in a position next year to have a full implementation of it. So you receive some introductory material in your packet. And I'm going to turn to Dr. Connor now to review this with you in some detail.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Tonight's workshop presentation will be focused on our assessment plan as well as the possible implementation of an assessment management system to be able to receive the necessary data to be able to make decisions and inform our practices in regards to Strategic Operating Plan as well as school-based decisions to improve instruction. If you look at the first slide, we're going to be presenting the assessment plan as well as what the assessment management system will do in the context of reducing assessments in the 2015-16 academic year as well as the 2016-17 academic year. And then also, Miss Filardo, we'll be presenting our assessment management system. The core components of the assessment plan have a process of implemented a cycled assessment, robust cycled assessment process. We're looking at leveraged assessment data. And what I mean by leveraged assessment data is in the context of second order change in regards to our practices. And right now, we only have two existing assessments that I would deem as leveraged assessments with the PELI and the M-Class DIBELS. As we go on through fourth, grades four through 12, we really don't see leverage assessments that impact our decisions as well as to see if we're closing the achievement gap in an accelerated manner. Also, this data from the assessment plan will be able to generate our decisions or generate information in regards to the development of our Strategic Operating Plan and also deepening the scope of the implementation with the theory of action. Those specific, the specific data metrics will be able to outline our goals as well as strategies and how well we are doing with our strategies. And are we having the best academic return of investments in regards to our decisions that we're making at the school level? And more importantly, to underscore the development of the goals as well as the strategies within the Strategic Operating Plan, this data will also give us information in regards to access and entry points for instruction. It will give instructional leaders at the school level data in regards to what are some of the key specific student achievement gaps as well as information regarding data team process and predictive measures for the Smarter Balance Assessment. In regards to this whole context of assessment coherence that leads to student achievement, our proposal is to streamline the leverage assessments in pre-K through three, which will be the implementation of PELI, we'll continue, DIBELS, as well as the proposed assessment management system, which is NWEA. In grades four through 11, we will use that cycled approach utilizing the NWA Assessment Management System. If you look at it in the context of college and career readiness goals, we have the assessments to provide, as well as the data. The SAT or College Board has redesigned the SAT suite that includes PSAT 8 and 9, which will be administered in grades eight and nine, the SAT which will be administered in grade 11, um, excuse me, in grades 10, and the SAT in grade 11. What's great about this is that there's coherence in regards to the data reporting system from the PSAT 8 and 9, the PSAT as well as the SAT. If you look at our current practices right now in regards to assessment administration at the school level, kindergarten to grade 12 students on an average take about 12 to 14 assessments, which includes the mandated SDE assessments, whether it be the Kindergarten Mastery Test in Science, or whether it be the CAP, the Smarter Balance, the SAT. We have too many assessments that are not providing us with the information that we need to really curtail our practices. You see that as well as in middle school as well as high school. Our proposal is we want to be able to significantly reduce the actual utilization of our assessment practices. In 2015-16, Ms. Filardo's going to review with you the NWA Assessment Management System as well as the logistics and pragmatics of it. We will be able to get that data on time and eliminate five assessments from the pilot schools that are participating in the NWA Assessment Pilot. And 2016 and 17, we will reduce that number by a total of nine assessments. So it's one assessment management system, we'll reduce nine assessments from our current assessment practices that we're using right now in the normal public schools. I'm going to turn it over to Diane to review the NWA.
Thank you. My purpose tonight is just to give you an introduction to NWA. It's a comprehensive assessment management system, and it tracks not only academic achievement but student growth. It informs instruction. It's, it's an ongoing assessment that's given three times a year, and its purpose is really to inform and adjust instruction before we get to the point of doing a summative assessment at the end of instruction. It provides a dashboard, and it's a dashboard with reports on the teacher level, on the school level, and on the district level. And it establishes its student instructional level so teachers know where to begin instruction. And it's given BOY beginning of year in September, MOY middle of year in January, and ELY at the end of the year either May or June. And the measures of academic progress MAP is short tests, you see between 42 and 64 questions in reading, language usage, and mathematics. Now, these tests, just like Smarter Balance tests, are on time, but the range of time is about 45 minutes. For students in grades K through 2, it's about 20 minutes to 30 minutes. They are adaptive tests. These are, these are tests that adapt depending upon the response of the students. If a student is getting questions correct, the difficulty of the next item will be harder. If the students are getting items incorrect, the difficulty will be lower. So we're able to pinpoint exactly where the student is on the learning continuum. And this really isn't aligned with what we have in Smarter Balance. So why would we take the MAP? As Dr. Connor mentioned, we get instant results. Within two or three days of taking the test, teachers and district will have results from those assessments. And it measures growth of all students across years. And a teacher will know where to focus instructions, what skills need to be reinforced, need to be developed, and skills that need to be introduced. And there's measures of projected growth based upon the level of the student and the length of time, if you're doing a 12-week cycle or a 10-week cycle, there'll be a projection of growth, what's the expectation for learning. So we don't only want to know where, where are students achieving, but how they're growing. Because we have examples of low achieving students with low growth, but we have students that are high on the achievement scale, but yet they have low growth. So this will pinpoint a combination of growth and achievement level.
Sure. That's a good question. Okay, if you do, focus your attention to the screen. You'll see a model data report that would be generated by NWA. If you look at the yellow, the yellow are Smarter Balance as well as ACT predictors of the Smarter Balance. So hypothetically, the numbers that you have here, and again, these are fictitious numbers, these are, these are called RIT scores on the NWA Assessment Management System. Those numbers are aligned to the Smarter Balance vertical scale scores. So when students or parents receive reports about their child, they will receive what they consider a vertical scale score. Here is the NWA median, which is the cut score for the fall. So hypothetically, if a student was to be successful on the Smarter Balance to reach that level three, they would have to score 218 on the NWA Assessment. So the information that you receive right here, this is high achievement, so anything above the median will be considered high achievement, and anything below the median will be considered low achievement. Now, as an example, a teacher or a principal might receive information in regards to that student. Hypothetically, let's say that the student scored a 114 or 115, that would be considered under low achievement. So as they review the dashboard with the embedded data reports in there, the teachers will actually see, and the teachers, I mean principals will actually see information in regards to the specific Common Core State Standard that's outlined, and then they will see the access and entry point of that student, where the target, specific instructional practices, especially in the context of Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. And then they'll be able to monitor or progress monitor specifically in the context of those specific targets. The Common Core uses the language targets, not skills. So in the context of ELA and in MAP, you will see the, the standard and the aligned target that students are supposed to master. So within this, I apologize, within this, within this ladder, as you can see, in order to master this specific standard within the CCSS, students will be, would have to master these core targets in order to reach mastery at that standard. However, the data that we will receive from the dashboard would tell us where the access and entry point of instruction is to support them in a small group context, whether it be through technology. However, the teacher uses his or her methodology, they'll be able to have targeted focuses for that student to be able to move, to move forward.
Before Michael goes on, I think you can appreciate the connection between this kind of data and our need for Tier Two and Tier Three interventions, because this basically tells you what the intervention should be, right?
And the last slide shows the correlation between the NWA Assessment Administration as well as the Smarter Balance. So in the fall, the information that principals as well as teachers will be receiving is the actual point of student growth, the norm projections. This is, I think, a critical component within the data dashboard, is the actual projection, the projection of students and the rate of growth in the context of how they scored. So now principals can be strategic in regards to how to be able to support their teachers in regards to high leverage instructional strategy adoption, as well as teachers can be able to have those collaborative conversations around how to be able to support specific students with specific targets that they need to address. By the mid-year with the MAP administration, in the mid-year where we can see is we'll look at the actual norm reference data, and this is great because we can actually see where our students are in the context of state, in the context of national, national progress with students that are taking this NWA Assessment. And this assessment management system is being utilized nationally. So we have pretty strong data in the context of the rate of growth and if we're actually closing the achievement gap. This correlates with the winter of the Smarter Balance. With the interim assessments, I think the NWA is stronger in the context of giving us valid information in regards to how our students are performing with specific Common Core State Standards. There's a seamless alignment between the two. And then the spring is when administrators, as well as district level administrators and teachers, will be able to look at the rate of growth. Did we exceed meet, or did we fail the projection rate of closing the achievement gap? And also, this will be able to modify our specific strategies in the context of the Strategic Operating Plan and what we need to do to make adjustments to ensure that all of our students are performing at a high level. The proposal for the actual pilot.
Before you get into the pilot, okay, I want to say a couple more words and then ask Board members if they have any questions so far, okay? Because again, we're throwing a lot of information at you very, very quickly, and it's, you know, jargon laden, and it's stuff that we as educators understand, but you know, the public may not understand as well yet. So, you know, the cycle assessment, the reason why we call it the cycle assessment is there are four cycles, essentially six to eight weeks. So the first one occurs at the very beginning of the school year, when students come to school, they take the initial assessment. Eight weeks later, sometime in December, is cycle two. Cycle two is very important for several reasons. One is it predicts cycle three, which is our high stakes S-PAC testing, right, in, in April, March. But in addition to that, the cycle two enables, would enable me to give you as a Board a mid-year report on how the school district is doing. Because we can tell at that point, you know, what the, where the achievement level is on track, where it's on track, where it's not. For our teachers in the classroom, it provides them for the first time with information where they can make adjustments before our students take the high stakes test. Now, right now, that's not possible, right? We go into the high stakes test blind and we hope for the best, right? And we should know where we stand in December so that adjustments can be made in instruction before that. The end of the year cycle is equally important in that that is, will, will inform whether or not the achievement gap is closing and where it's closing and where it's not. The NWA provides a national growth measure, standard. You can compare that against the national growth standard of our students in any school, in any classroom, in the district as a whole by grade. And if the growth is greater than the standard, you're closing the gap. If it's not, the gap is increasing. So from the, from a Board standpoint, it gives you very clear indications around the achievement gap issue, which is so important to all of us. And then finally, I would point out something that is not related to this, but also related to an important issue for us. As you know, we are trying to do a better job in the implementation of the CED evaluation program, our state evaluation and educator evaluation development program, which has been, as you know, rocky to say the best in the last year or two. Currently, and expected to continue, the rules of CED, which are state law, require that 20% of the evaluation be based on a standardized measure, right? And that the other 20% is based upon a local measure for a total of 40% being based on student achievement. Now currently, our only option is to use the S-PAC, which is the high stakes test, as the standardized measure for the 20%. And this affects everyone in the school system, all teachers, all principals. The problem with that is that the S-PAC is not available till the following fall. So this year, for example, we will be forced, everyone will be forced to give tentative ratings in June, subject to change when the S-PAC arrives in September. This is not a good system. The NWA, as Dr. Connor points out, you get immediate data. So you use the NWA to set your goals for CED, right? You get immediate data at the end of the year, you know whether your goals have been met, you know whether that 20% has been met, and you're able to finalize an evaluation in June, both for teachers and for administrators. So that is another benefit that, you know, will, will help us just create a more efficient, effective system for our educators. So let's pause there for Board questions if we could.
Yes. How do we handle the mod assessments? And how has the data shown? Where, where can you tell for student growth with the modification testing that they have for special ed students?
There are limited modifications that I'm aware of for special ed students. And this is something, if this is adopted, we'll, we'll need to, to look at in depth. Unlike Smarter Balance, which has an alternative test for some students in special ed, that doesn't exist with NWA, but they do have some, some supports for special education students.
Yes, because I'm concerned in how we're going to be monitoring the data on student growth.
Well, what will happen is there'll be a group, a norm group of special education students nationally, and you'll be able to look at their growth and compare the growth to our students to that. That, that's why we were able to differentiate within, in other words, the growth, the norms that you're looking at depends upon what group of students you're looking at.
Okay, so as far as our district, in our district in Norwalk, how can we be able to see the growth within our own district with our special ed students?
Well, you'll be able, just as you can with CMT, we did it with CMT, we can do with Smarter Balance, we can disaggregate our data and look at our groups.
So Ms. Rivas, put it another way, there's two ways you can. And one is the comparison between those students beginning of the year and end of the year test. That will give you an indication of growth. And then, as Ms. Filardo pointed out, in addition to that, there is a special ed national norm group, which gives you predictive information as to how much growth the student should be making. And we can look at our special education students against that and determine if, whether or not they're making the same growth.
Okay, because they had students that had the, when the CMT testing was, you had students one year, let's say in sixth grade would take a mod in math, and then in the next testing year would not take a, take a mod. So then, how, how would you, how would you determine? Because it says that N-E, NWA is saying all children are succeeding. So we need to close the gaps in all of our subgroups. So by doing that, how can, by, by using this assessment plan, how, what are we basing, how are we going to make our children, help our children to succeed and have student growth where we can analyze the data and be able to utilize that in order to help them all? Because you did include formative assessments, and formative assessments, we should have been doing that all along in our school district. So then, what, since each child has an individual, individualized plan, then how would that child was included within that same classroom? How would you be able to monitor the data in order to close the gap for special education as well as English language learning?
Well, we will have data, normative data, as Dr. Adamowski pointed out, not only district-wide data in terms of what is the 50th percentile for special education for EL students, what is the expected growth nationally? We can compare that to our growth. But more importantly, now for each child, we'll know this, where instruction should start, what is the optimal point? It's not a question of what did the child master, but what's the instructional level? Where should teaching begin? And this is the information we really did not have. And likewise, we never really had, remember we used to talk about vertical scale scores? We talked about CMT? We would compare grades three to five growth, six to eight growth on that vertical scale. We would compare that growth to the state, but did we know if that constituted good growth? We never knew that. But NWA's had this information now for, I think, almost 30 years. So it has a history over time of what constitutes good growth. And this is, this is going to be very important for us.
And Ms. Rivas, to answer the other part of your question, our special ed teachers will have the same information as regular education teachers regarding the levels where their students are scoring and what interventions and adjustments in teaching they can, they can make as a result of that.
All right, I'm just concerned that one year you have a modification, then the following testing you don't, and then the other year you do. So then how, how could you, like nip this in the bud? How can you really deal with, with exactly to make, to have that student grow academically as, as well as personal growth?
Yeah, we will, we will know that from the NWEA. I think the answer is we will not know that from the S-PAC. Now, I think what you were referring to earlier was the MAS, Modified Assessment, all right? Now, there is, there is an S-PAC equivalent of that. And again, that, that will give you data, you know, that could be compared to special ed students in other districts in Connecticut, but it's not going to give you the instructional data in terms of growth or how to intervene in their instruction.
Because I think that was, we need to do that too, of what children ought to succeed. And we're, and we're looking into these type of assessments, but we must at one point or another, we have to include special education. Because I do not see any, I have not seen any type of progress in this area. Okay.
Now, we're, we're on the same page.
Okay.
Brian, have a question?
Yeah. Thanks, Dr. Connor. I fully support computer-adapted testing. I think that's totally the way to go. I came in a little late, I'm sorry. But earlier in the packet, and I saw this earlier, the costs, are these incremental or are there some offsets coming from the, the testing that we're going to eliminate? How is that? I just see a, what looks like incremental cost here.
Right. The, for the first year for the pilot, Mr. Hamilton, myself, as well as Tally McGraw and Hurley, including Dr. Adamowski, came together to look at how we're going to be able to financially address this or pay this. For the first year, as you can see, it's $141,000. Mr. Hamilton, who is... Mr. Hamilton, who is going to be following me, is going to present how we're going to be able to address that in the '15, '16 academic year, as well as the '16, '17 academic year. Yes, right.
Dr. Adamowski, you said that Cycle Two and Cycle Four are very important to look at. I'm just curious, thinking about this on the slide, is it important to look at Cycle Four of one year and Cycle One of the next year or not?
It is. And you know, that's a very insightful question, because what it generally will show you is how much regression has occurred during the summer. And if we do bridge the gap with more summer instruction, it will inform the effectiveness of that. But that is a common phenomenon, because this is adjusted to the norm of each grade level. So quite often, you will see students at a higher level at the end of the school year, and then the same students start with that Cycle One assessment the following year, and you'll see a drop in it. So that's a very insightful question.
Harvey?
Just to piggyback off of Mr. Mc's questions, when it comes to cost, are we going to need additional staff, upgrade to servers or computer technology? Are we, do we have everything we need to handle all this? And I see Ralph shaking his head.
Yeah, definitely. And especially for the, the nice thing is that we're going to be piloting it this year. So we have been on the phone, from a data standpoint, we know exactly what needs to get put in place. They actually recommend Chromebooks to take the assessment. So we're completely on the right track with what we have. And from a data standpoint, bandwidth, we're in good shape. One of the things we will be doing, and this is something that I'll be working on with Dr. Connor, is that since we're piloting it in a group of schools, when those schools actually start the assessment, there will be a technician that I have on staff at the beginning of those each time to make sure that we get through that. That becomes a priority, to make sure that actually technically we're in place. So, yeah.
So staff-wise, we're okay. Staff, Mike. Okay. Mike?
Two questions. Who is Northwest Evaluation Association? Is it?
It's a nonprofit.
And secondly, how have we decided or what would be the pilot schools? Is it several at each level type of thing?
Yes.
Yes, this actually is a good segue into the pilot, into the pilot. I think the short answer, though, is we ask for volunteers. Ask for those to step up and try to provide a small incentive for doing that, which Dr. Connor will explain.
Right. And just underscore with Dr. Adamowski, so we are going to present this to principals on Thursday. We are looking for eight schools to be a part of the initial pilot, six elementary schools, three Title I schools, plus three non-Title I schools, one middle school, and one high school. So we are hoping that our administrators will step up and participate in our initial NWA assessment management system pilot. If they participate in the pilot, there's going to be a pilot incentive. And that incentive is going to be $10,000 given to each school dedicated around strengthening and deepening their implementation of Tier Two and Tier Three instruction to be able to support this.
So in other words, once they take the pilot and they have data on what students need, they have a little bit of money to work on addressing.
Work on addressing. Right.
And how many Title I schools, do you think?
Three Title I schools and three non-Title I schools at the elementary school level.
Oh, that's up to six, okay.
Mr. Cassens?
So Mr. Hamilton's figure of 140 grand includes the 10 grand in your school, or is that?
Yes.
It's in there.
Yes, that's in there.
Can we clarify? I think somewhere I read we had talked about tonight, but in the end, with the full implementation, the number of tests that students will take will decline, maybe not so much in the high school kids, but for the elementary school kids, they're going to be taking nine fewer assessments.
Yes, nine fewer assessments.
So all this stuff, and I think you've delineated in that table there, stuff that was coming from Journeys and Go Math, all that is, you know, all kind of NWAs?
Right. And principal teacher discretion on it, they want to use that as a dip state assessment to see the progress of their students in the context of that specific standard or that target. However, they won't be obligated to take that test because of the NWA substitution.
Or if they wanted to use it as one of their local measures in their CED improvement plan.
And then with NWA, what about this whole issue? I don't think it's been a big problem for us, but it's gotten national attention, you know, the opt-out movement. Is there any kind of, I don't know what to call it, special treatment? Or do they have a strategy to minimize that?
Well, fortunately, we have not been one of those districts that, I think that, you know, for the most part, there is a desire on the part of all parents and educators to know how our children are doing and how they could do better. So, you know, while it may be possible to opt out, I think you will see that in almost any district, applied to a greater degree with the S-PAC than the NWA. Because NWA is a developmental test, and every parent wants to know that their child is growing. Every teacher wants to know how to help a child grow. So the NWA right now is the most widely-used cycle assessment in Connecticut. In fact, just about every district our size except Norwalk is using it. And this is, so this is the area where we need to catch up. And again, I'm not aware of any opt-out issues with the NWA. The ones I'm aware of have applied to the S-PAC.
Yes, I noticed on here, the budget and funding sources, the first year, I see that we have
taken it from our account, from a non-lapsing account. But the following two years, 2016 through '17, 2017 through 2018, the fundings will be coming out of the Alliance District grant.
Yes, it's my hope and intention, and yours as well, is that we are going to shift some of the funds from the Alliance grant into the local budget that should be in the local budget. So for example, the minute we go to a student-based budget, the support for those 40 teachers or so, first, second, third year teachers, where a percentage of their salary is paid, that will go away and be rolled into the per pupil allocation. So that is going to free up money, and we'll work on this incrementally each year until we get to the point where we can use the entire Alliance grant for its intended purpose. This is one of its intended purposes, because it's directly related to reading and math intervention, which statistically is the, two of the four focus areas for Alliance.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Murray?
Right. I wanted to go back to the regression that takes place in the summer. And just to add, if we could put it on our to-do list to take just a close look at what we have in place, we spend money, we have agencies who put out money for programs to help our students during the summer to try to minimize. If that could be looked at, because I see you're kind of auditing what is in place, I think maybe in some places we can be more efficient, use our money wiser. So if we could just take a look at that, what we already have in place for summer, because I know there are a lot of dollars that are put out.
Very, very good point. There may be some summer programs currently where, which are very effective in preventing regression. But it'll let us know that, and it'll let us know where it may not be. The national research suggests that this is particularly important with low-income children, that the effect of summer learning experiences have less of an effect on middle-class and higher-income children. And so we can track that, and we can look at those students who are eligible for free lunch. We can see whether or not they have a summer learning experience. And if they do, what was the effect on their cycle assessment the following September? You know, did they lose less ground in terms of regression? That would be a really good use of that data.
Thank you.
Ms. Keys?
If I could just piggyback on what I had mentioned, I know for two of our high schools, I know Norwalk High School, I believe, Ryan McMahon, we have freshman academy, which is a five-week program, which I think was really beneficial to many of our high school students. So it would be great if we can do something like that, look into something like that for some of our middle school children, as well as our elementary school children. And I don't know if there was ever a survey, I think I might have spoken to Mr. Roberts about it last year, but to see what our children, our students retained during those five weeks. You know, they had some of the core classes, as well as field trips and other things that were happening during that period, but it was a very structured.
Yeah, the answer to your question is yes, we can do that. And, you know, I think from a policy standpoint, in your role as a board member, it also raises the question as to whether or not some of these, some extension of learning during the summer is required of some students? Or do you just keep it voluntary the way it is now? And the bridge program, the summer bridge program would be a good example.
This was also an introduction for middle school children, just to have a flavor or flair for high school, but also it covered some of their core classes. If you'd like to look into more.
Okay. Ms. Cassens?
You may have answered it, I'm not sure. Are you comparing year over year, or you're just comparing the very last test to see where the growth is?
It's beginning of year to end of year in terms of growth.
But not year over year? You're not looking where they came in last year?
We can, we can.
We can do that.
Data reports to look at it from a cohort manager.
But is that a key indicator?
Well, you have for year-to-year growth, you have the indicator of the high-stakes test, because that's basically what a summative evaluation does. It compares year to year. So you'll have your S-PAC for that.
Yeah.
The value of this is, while it can provide you with that information, the value of this is more toward providing beginning-of-year-to-end-of-year growth.
Okay. Good questions. Shimeri to move on?
All right, so the pilot, this is a big undertaking. We all feel it's wise that we pilot this before just jumping into it. District-wide, this is going to require teacher training, reorientation of our schools toward it. There may be technical issues, as was pointed out, although we have the hardware and the bandwidth and all of that, we still have not had experience with this in the same way as some other school districts have. So with that in mind, the recommendation is that we do a pilot. And the other reason for a pilot is that we have already missed Cycle One, which is the beginning of the school year, right? So this kind of dulls or dampens the effect of a district-wide implementation. So I think it's best to pilot it this year. So Michael, can you talk a little bit about your thoughts on the pilot?
Yes, with the pilot, again, you know, looking at teacher training, leadership training, and technology support. Our initial training, once the principals identify their schools that they want to participate in the pilot, the first training is going to take place on November 3rd. That is the District-Wide Professional Development Day. For the participating teachers from the pilot school in grades four through five, we will have an onsite trainer for that cohort, also for the middle school that will be participating in the pilot, as well as the high school. The second training, pending Dr. Adamowski's approval, will be the pilot schools will be participating in a leadership training, and that will take place in the November administrators' training. And then in December, Mr. Ralph Balzese, as well as his team, will go to those pilot schools to see in regards to technology, to ensure that it's a place for the first implementation, which will be January 5th.
Michael, these one-day training sessions?
Yes, these are one-day trainings, absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to go through the, or is that it on the pilot?
No, that's it on the pilot.
Okay. Any questions?
Do you think we're looking at one day? What if you find that you might, our students, not students, teachers may need more than one day? Can we extend it? I mean, is it?
There's going to be a technical assistance support process where the actual training is going to occur. And Ms. Flaherty, myself, as well as Mr. Balzese, will be providing the adaptive support, going to the sites, ensuring that teachers are feeling supported, leaders are feeling supported with the implementation, and also just reviewing basic pragmatics and logistics of the assessment management system. So the pilot is implemented in a successful manner.
And once we have the pilot program going, and let's say it's successful, would we have ongoing PD days?
Absolutely. So the training immediately after the first administration, the middle of the year, since we didn't administer at the beginning of the year, will be February, where we will have a trainer from NWA provide data analysis and how to be able to review that data dashboard in depth with each of the schools, as well as the administrators.
Since we're speaking about professional development, will this be something that's in addition to what the norm, because I know we have to probably work things out with the different people, teacher units or something, with days and all that? Would this, you know, because I'm hearing Heidi saying that additional PD, you know, development, is this something that's going to be in addition to what's the norm that's out there now as far as?
No, we use the days we have.
To implement this into it?
You know, our next opportunity to address the amount of time that we have would be when you set the calendar again, which I'm hoping is going to be around February or March. We are going to have some recommendations on the calendar. Obviously, we want to have as much instructional time as we can, and we need as much professional development time as we can. And so, you know, we'll address those with you. But for this year, no, it would be, it would be fit into the time we have available, and it would be a very good use of that time.
Okay.
One more.
Yes, Heidi.
Once we've gone through this, the training is done, the PD is done, we have, I would suggest that we'd have some kind of survey or evaluation from the teachers, what's worked, what hasn't worked.
Absolutely.
What we can implement, I think would be key after maybe a couple of months.
Absolutely.
To send that out.
Absolutely. And then again, you know, that's part of the process of the pilot, is to have an understanding of, you know, what we need to do to make alterations or changes within the implementation, how did it go, how did it go in regards to teacher implementation, leadership, how did it change the conversation around instruction, how did it change the conversation around intervention? So yes, a survey will be administered, and then we will present the report to Dr. Adamowski.
I think one of the, to your question, I think one of the adjustments in this area is going to be with our data teams. Our data teams K-3 have had a lot of data because of the M-Class, which is essentially a cycle assessment, this is the DIBELS, right? So, but our data teams four through 11 really have not. So they haven't had a lot to work with. And I think this is going to be a developmental process of learning how to use this data. And I think this will take a while. I don't think it's going to be accomplished during the pilot year, but over time, you know, that has to be a focus of professional development as well.
All right.
Now, Michael, thank you, and Diane, thank you very much. Board members, you're probably wondering why we're talking about the Alliance building plan on the same agenda, right? But there is a reason for this. And Mr. Hamilton is going to come up and do that. We're essentially trying to, in that regard, present a plan as to how we can finance the pilot this year without disrupting other district functions. The, I'll just introduce that by saying that we had some very, very good news recently in that the 30 Alliance districts in the state, as a result of changes made in the Alliance statute in the last session of the General Assembly, now have available to them on an entitlement basis. It's not something that's competitive that you have to apply for, you simply have it, a small amount of money for capital improvements in Alliance District schools. And our designated amount is 1.5 million. And so that allows us to address some, you know, sorely needed repairs. But it also takes the pressure off of our, of our non-lapsing account, which is where our surplus is deposited. So, all right, so Dr. Connor and Ms. Flaherty can come back for further questions if necessary. Let me ask Mr. Hamilton if he could go to that topic.
grant, as well as a proposed use or allocation of those. I've got a presentation up here that sort of walks through the high points, if you will, of this particular program. You can refer to either the memo or to the presentation. It's essentially more or less the same information in both places. So as the superintendent mentioned, this is a new program that was revived this past legislative session, actually in the June special session, and it was an old grant program that was significantly amended to specifically target funding for Alliance districts, and Norwalk is one of the 30 Alliance districts. The program is intended to fund school building improvement projects that are generally not eligible for funding under the State School Construction Program. So this is not in lieu of or taking the place of major renovation work, or, you know, new classroom construction, or renovate as new type projects, but rather is intended to help districts take care of some of those items that typically fall into the ineligible category. And as you know, Norwalk's reimbursement under the school building program is, is one of the lowest in the state at about 32%. And so finding funds, enough funds to meet all of the needs of our school district and of the buildings is a major challenge for the district. So we're, you know, thrilled that this grant program is being made available. There's $50 million statewide that is available. It's being distributed based on student population, so Norwalk is falling into group two. The amount of money that Norwalk is eligible to receive under this program is $1,710,000. It is a two-year grant program. It's my understanding that that $50 million statewide is intended to be for a two-year period. We're, you know, still waiting for some final confirmation if they're going to make a second, you know, round of funding available, or whether $50 million is the commitment, but at this point, we believe it's $50 million. The applications are going to be accepted three times a year by the state: end of October, end of January, and end of March. All of the funds must be expended by June of 2017, so we have a two-year window to get this completed. Now, the types of projects, and again, this is on the memo I just handed out as well, we're talking about projects like replacing windows and doors, replacing boilers and HVAC equipment, replacing internal communications equipment, replacing lockers, which we know lockers, it's been an issue of recent concern, replacing cafeteria equipment, ceilings, replacing ceilings and floor coverings, upgrading restrooms and water fountains, upgrading lighting fixtures, upgrading or making energy efficiency improvements, upgrading entryways, driveways, parking areas, play areas, and fields, upgrading equipment, upgrading security systems, including video surveillance and fencing, and other similar work approved by the Commissioner of Administrative Services for the state. So again, as I indicated, it's a two-year grant program for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. We're coming up to the first application deadline, October 31st. And again, all funds must be expended by June of 2017. I put it in here because the state has indicated to us that funding is contingent upon approval of the State Bond Commission. So periodically, as probably after each application period closes, the State Board of Education will go to the Bond Commission, and then the Bond Commission will need to, you know, to approve the final allocation of funding. I make that point because although the funding is available both in fiscal year 15, 16, and 16, 17, and there are three bites at the apple, if you will, three times to apply for funding, because the State Bond Commission has a role to play here, it behooves us to act relatively quickly if we can. In other words, the sooner we get a grant application in, and the sooner it gets accepted, then the sooner we're assured that the State Bond Commission has acted and that the projects can go forward. So again, it's not essential necessarily that everything be submitted for the December, for the October deadline, but it would be nice if we could get an application in, and I certainly hope to get an application in for this October. The board must approve the district's application for funding, and obviously, that's why we're bringing it forward for you tonight, is to apprise you of this program, and also talk about the specific projects that we're recommending. So we did try to use some criteria in developing our recommendations to what we're going to bring forward before you. First, we're looking for projects that are eligible for funding under the program itself, so projects that meet the state criteria. And the state is still providing some guidance for school districts on those issues, so there are some, still some open questions, but we believe that the projects that we're presenting tonight do qualify for the, for funding under the program. We've tried to address high priority projects that address an important unmet need. So we're trying to address those things that we think we would otherwise need to undertake ourselves sometime over the next several years. And we've tried to coordinate our requests with the ongoing facilities assessment, which of course is not complete, but is underway. So we've tried to coordinate these requests with that work, as well as with recent and planned school renovation projects that are part of the city's adopted five-year capital plan. Now, we do expect that the district will be requesting in the upcoming capital budget and in subsequent capital budgets, some revisions to that plan based on the results that ultimately come out of or emanate from the facilities assessment. But we do know, at least for instance, I'll just mention one project that is in fact a high priority project that we haven't put on this list because it is essentially sort of on the track for funding in the city's capital budget next year already. And that project is the West Rocks Middle School Window Replacement, which is a big, big project. That project received funding for the design work in the current city capital budget and is been recommended next year for full funding. So we left that off this list because we felt, design's already funded, construction is already planned by the city, funding for construction is already planned by the city next year, so it didn't make sense to put that on this list. And then finally, we have attempted to try to bring forward a proposal that equitably distributes the funds across the district. So that's another element of our recommendations. And I suspect, let's see if, I'm not sure how readable that is for people in the audience. You all should have in your package, the last page of the letter is the list of projects here. And Bill Hodel is here with me, and Bill is, you know, prepared to answer specific questions. I'm not sure if you want me to walk through them, or ask Bill to sort of give a highlight, and then open it up for questions. You can see there are a number of projects of different magnitude, just to sort of walk down the list. Bryan McMahon High School, we have some work in the auditorium related to removing scaffolding that was set up for stage spotlights. It's, Bill believes that represents a safety concern and consideration at Bryan McMahon. Some mason repairs in the drive, which is a project Bill tells me there's been some interest in, and he believes needs to be addressed. Lockers at Norwalk High School, both the girls' locker rooms and the boys' locker rooms. Funding for the cogeneration unit, which was constructed back when the school was renovated, that cogeneration unit is not presently operational. And if we get that unit operational, there is significant energy savings that can be realized by getting that, that unit operational. So Bill has requested funding for that. There are issues related to the pool at Norwalk High School, structural repairs, and again, Bill can, can talk to those, but he feels those are an important issue. Nathan Hale Middle School, we have put the girls' and boys' locker rooms replacement on, on the list for Nathan Hale. Rotten Middle School with some exterior repairs in the rear walkway. Cranberry and Fox Run, we've proposed replacement of vinyl asbestos tile and carpeting in both of those schools. Tracy, re-insulating some pipe, and again, that's an energy-saving initiative. We've listed for all district schools furniture, classroom furniture replacement, replacement of floor matting, replacement of cleaning equipment, and this is major, this is not mops and buckets, this is major equipment that we're talking about, floor strippers and so forth. This will address, and several of the items you'll see there, will address issues that arise, or that have been expressed back to the facilities department in terms of overall cleanliness of the facilities. So it will allow us to sort of up the level of service, if you will, that's provided the school buildings. Water fountain replacement at 10 elementary schools, bathroom fixtures and partitions at four elementary, middle schools. And then replacing floor harnessers at four middle schools and two elementary schools. Curtain replacement at four different schools, two elementary schools and two middle schools. Air conditioning replacement identified five units at two elementary schools and two middle schools. Replacing water-cooled refrigeration with air-cooled, Norwalk High School, Nathan Hale Middle School and central kitchen. And again, this is a energy efficiency initiative, and then costs related to overseeing those projects, GC or construction manager costs associated with those projects. So that's the proposal, and obviously, we're open to, you know, comments, suggestions, and direction from the board. Again, we do think it's, it behooves the district to get an application into the state sooner rather than later, just because when things change at the state, you know, all of a sudden, the window could close, we don't want to be left, you know, outside rather than inside. Well, fortunately, we have a board meeting a week from now, so we do have an opportunity to take action on this before the deadline. Brian, you have a question?
Yeah, first, this is great, but two quick questions. What's hard cost versus soft cost?
Hard cost is general construction, the actual meat and potatoes of it. Soft cost is consulting work on architects.
Okay, all right, great. And then, why would, I understand the difference between upgrade and repairs maintenance, but why would an electrical system upgrade to a minimal acceptable level not be viewed as something that could come under this?
Give an example, in other words?
Well, I mean, you know, I know specifically at Cranberry, you know, the biggest complaint amongst the parents, faculty, staff is, you know, they, they can't charge basic devices like tablets, you know, the fuse circuit constantly tripping. It may be viewed as an upgrade, but the school has an electrical system designed for 1950's usage.
That's something that would probably far exceed a lot of these numbers, and something that would be captured in the facility assessment study.
Okay.
There are more than two or three schools with low workers coming in.
Yeah, I understand, it's not limited to Cranberry, but?
Yes, I think Cranberry has about 800 amp service, where some of the other schools of that size have 2,000, so certainly undersized.
Yeah, we can't, they can't run like three toasters to run the pancake breakfast without tripping the fuse.
Yes.
And they can't charge tablets that we might use for testing.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think this is great, I think the sooner the better, we get this in would be fantastic. I never thought this would happen unless six years that we'd actually start replacing the lockers at Norwalk High School. And it's just huge in Bryan McMahon, because we've had so many issues, oh no, sorry, just at Norwalk High School, but we've had, the lockers have been there for 40 years, I don't know, long, long, long time. And I think that's just really, really important. It seems trivial, but it isn't, I think especially for our students, there's 1,600 students in Norwalk High School. So I'm glad all these items are on here, but I think that's really important.
Eric Connors?
Was there any structural repairs for the Pathway School, formerly Briggs? Was there anything looked into as far as Briggs goes? Because I recall that there was, when we were thinking of, once considering relocating the students elsewhere, they said that the building was not up to code, or something was, was wrong with the, with the building structure itself? Or is there anything that was looked into as far as improvements along the building?
Yeah, I think Briggs has been a major focus of attention in the facilities study, okay? Because I think there are a number of issues there. One fundamental issue is that, is it cost-effective to rehab that building, all right? Or should it be at a different site? So there's, there's question number one. Secondly, is the extent of which repairs and improvements need to be made to Briggs to make it a viable facility? And so what I'm getting at with that is that's one of the schools that comes closest to the renovation as new criteria, right? So under those circumstances, you wouldn't want to do piecemeal repairs at this point. You would want to make a determination in the facilities study first, you know, which you will be doing, I'm assuming, during the months of December, January, February, as to what the long-term plan is for Briggs.
Okay, so as far as that will, maybe by next year, we have an idea?
Oh yeah, you will, by, by spring, my hope, and I know yours as well, would be that you have an approved facilities master plan and a schedule of what would be going forth. But it goes forth in several categories. One is this area of the city's capital improvements. Another is what we have in our annual budget, which are repairs under 100,000. Generally, the capital, city's capital budget would be between 100,000 and 250,000. But then beyond 250,000, you get into the reimbursable, state reimbursable renovation as new area where you have to do bonding in order to fix the school, because the repairs and the code compliance issues are so extensive.
Okay, last two questions. As far as Kendall, Kendall and Ponus, I recall that there was a leaky roof situation. The roof is sturdy, there is no more leaks, there is no, the roof has been totally repaired? No more repairs?
The K-Wing at Kendall was repaired this month last year. That was quite an extent of leak, was more of a deluge. So that was already taken care of by the warranty holder. The leak at Ponus, I think in the library, has also been repaired.
And when was that done?
That leak was taken care of in the early summer.
This year, this summer?
This year, yes. And as I noted, Kendall was done last October.
Okay. So presently, there are no leaking surprises in our, in our schools?
Well, we've been waiting for a good rain. The last good rain we had was a week or a week and a half ago. And we had two minor leaks at two different schools, so one in each. So we've been doing much better, because I've been holding the warranty holder trim code to the letter of the law.
So okay, it is good to have something on the safe side in case some leak does pop up, helping, you don't have anything raiding in the classrooms.
Well, the good thing is, we have long warranties on most of the roads, and we're just holding them to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Now, again, the connection between these two reports and areas of discussion tonight is we would like to use the non-lapsing account to fund the NWA pilot this year. And this Alliance Building Grant will take the pressure off the non-lapsing account for these very pressing facility issues.
I know, when we got the, the original proposal from Rich Rudel, the anticipation was that we would be able to use the non-lapsing account for these kinds of capital pairs.
Right, and that's exactly why we're here. Right, and that's exactly why we're here tonight with this.
And this, this allows us to do that through another funding source and redirect the surplus funds. That's really good news.
Yeah, so at your October meeting, we will be asking you to approve the annual assessment plan, as well as the pilot, as well as the application for the Alliance Building Grant.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Tom, Bill.
Thank you, guys. All right, so that completes the presentations that we're going to have tonight. The next item on the agenda is public comments. I'll turn this over to Mr. Cassinis.
Okay, the way we're going to do public comments at this point is the rules still apply, three minutes, when you come up here, we call, well, we don't have, we're not really going to use a list, so it's going to be more of an open mic. So whoever wants to come up, just raise your hand. I will recognize you can come up here. You'll have three minutes, we need your name, yet your address. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll wave my hand, and please finish the three minutes. I'll let you know when three minutes are over. Also, the comments are limited to just what was spoken about tonight, topics that we spoke about tonight, okay? So first, please, okay, Mr. Allison?
Anthony Allison, Executive Director of Norwalk Acts. My comments are specific to Dr. Conner's report and the tremendous plan that he laid out, and the specific questions that the board asked around summer, summer slide-related issues. One of the key components of the partnership of Norwalk Acts with its membership is direct alignment between community-based organizations, summertime programming with the district. And one of the things that we've been looking at very, very clearly is the end-of-year data that you all will be collecting through the various assessments and the alignment with our out-of-school time, summer-based programs. And one of the key pieces of all of that is really looking at what is being delivered by those programs, and is it meeting the actual needs of those students based upon that data? So we just met this afternoon for two hours, including members of the school district, looking at the fifth and sixth grade transition, eighth and ninth, and other summer-type, summer programming specifically for high school students. And we have, we knew that this new assessment plan was coming. We knew that there would be existing data points that we could start to look at now, but we're really going to be concentrating on the ones that are coming at the middle of the year and end of year to drive our thinking about the better alignment with, with this, you know, summer programming with the district and, and helping and working together to develop a much more systematic way of a summer system. So I just wanted to let you know that that's, that conversation is happening, and with district involvement, obviously, in that context. So I think by, I don't know, I would say in a few months, there will be a pretty comprehensive plan that will be created by the community partnership around this. So just so you know that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, certainly. Mrs. Sutter Murray?
Yeah, sorry.
Will that be issued with the public?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or is it just with them, please?
No, no, it'll be shared with the public, absolutely, because it'll be, it's a community plan, so it'll be shared with the public. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mosby, how'd you end up next?
Good evening, tonight, board. My name is John Mosby, 15 hours, I knew. First, I'd like to say to Dr. Anaski, I had an opportunity to meet with him on a couple occasions, and me and him had a good discussion, and I really was, me and him talked about a lot of the problems in the school system, and he sounded like he was on the right track. He's doing a very good job, in my opinion. But the only problem that I'm having, and it bothered me very much, is that the community of us are left out. We are not left out on none of the programs, we're always left in the dark, and this is why I'm even for the community. And the people are tired of it. Now, you take it all this building up, and I worked in this school for over 33 years. All these schools, West Rock and all of them, got fixed up, and Briggs never got done. They killed that school. Their people are, we, that school was designed to help the poor kids. They're not being addressed. And I'm gonna be very frank, I want to meet with Mr. O'Connor, but for some reason, but Mr. O'Connor, you've been ducking me, I asked you two or three times to meet you, David Allen, but we got muted, but you've been ducking. I want to say one thing, we got, we got, we got to deal with these poor kids in this country. All the wealthy kids and all this money coming in to them, we got to listen to us. And I'm getting sick and tired of all these lies being told that Briggs brought them, they're so good. Right here just now, they just say, they just filed a complaint against Briggs, both still feeling, especially a kid. They just filed with the state, all of them, the parents, them, just filed, they want the state to intervene, why these kids are always left out. And Briggs, I bet that was a, that was a my art school one time. They killed that school. I got, I got, I, and they've been lying to us, too, and I'm pissed about it. Dr. Allen did a relay the other day, and we were working good on an office in school for to help these poor kids. And I'm gonna be very brave, I got the document, where they say Briggs will get $10 million. I met up to Norwalk Community College, they promised me that we're gonna do, surely you was there, Mr. Harris was there at that, at that meeting with the college officer. We need something for these poor kids. We need something for these disadvantaged kids, disabled kids. You ain't doing nothing, all these people are getting this money to help these bright-eyed kids, Norwalk High, West Rock, and all of them getting the bright-eyed kids getting all this money, you run around here with all, but these poor kids ain't getting nothing. No guidance, no behavior council. And, and I'm serious about it. We gonna, we wanna meet with y'all, but you just ignore, like we're troublemaker, something. And I want you all to take, and I want to work with Dr., you're a good man, and I want to come out and talk with you, and I want to talk with you, sir, and tell you what's going on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, Diane?
Oh, sorry. Good evening, for the record, I'm Diane LaRocella, been in Norwalk for about 32 years. My address is 21 Blue Mountain Ridge Road, off of Matt's Left Off. The reason I'm here today is to offer, please think of me as a resource in relationship to your facility studies. Now, I haven't had the ability yet to read through, I don't even know if it's available to the public.
It is, it is not completed. There, there are two phases of this. The consultants are currently working on the second phase, which will inform the first phase, so the board has not seen it, no one has seen it, including myself. But we hope that sometime in November, this will be available to the facilities committee of the board with copies to the board, and then full board consideration, hopefully December, January, March, with a goal of having a facilities plan sometime this spring.
So the plan is to allow public input, but I'm asked, I'm a member of the Mayor's Energy and Environment Task Force, I helped found it with, and I've been, some of you know, know me, I've been in the environmental management business for a long time. In listening to Mr. Hodel and Mr. Hamilton, who I have spoken with about these green topics before, I look forward to being allowed to check out some of these plans. I noted, just for the record, and I know I have, you know, three minutes, one thing that I wanted to make sure, and I spoke about this with Mr. Rudel, Rudel, I always have difficulty pronouncing his last name, I joke about that, is that I wanted to make sure that the facilities company, who I think is terrific, it now appears to me that they did look at energy efficiency to a degree. However, I wanted to make sure that, because this is a plan with short and long range and prioritization, be aware that Eric Ribbin from the Norwalk Community College, who's a member of the Mayor's Energy and Environment Task Force, I believe did do a benchmarking of several of the buildings of the Board of Ed. Benchmarking is a system where you take the square footage, long story short, is that you compare it to other buildings around the country of its similar size to see, are we higher, are we lower, are we eating up a lot of electricity? So because we've done that, we hope that that will be factored in. Daylighting has been proven to show with, and I'm sure Dr. Adamowski has read some of these reports, it has been shown at every possibility to add daylighting helps increase points on certain tests. There's lots of data about this. And so I want to make sure that we're not just renovating without thinking short and long range and thinking outside the box. The cogeneration unit, that's been a mystery, and quite frankly, I would like to know what is the status of it, when did we know it, and it's been off for at least eight to 10 years. I think the public who paid for it, and we used state funds.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, 30 seconds to go, thank you. Also, we have lots of flat roofs. What I want to make sure is that we think outside the box, but we do what other schools, districts like Danbury has done. I want to see where we absolutely could use our flat rooftops for renewables, like solar, and green roofs. Green roofs are not just to be green, they actually filter polluted runoff, and it helps the water quality, it could be a curriculum enhancement. And lastly, I, I, you're not going to stop me mid-sentence, I'm sure, I just wanted you all.
I have done it in the past.
To me, but you won't do that to me. I just am finishing my sentence, and that is, let's look at facilities for recycling, across-the-board recycling, even though it's an operating budget, it's a budget season, I love the budget season, let's look and see where we can improve our across-the-board recycling facilities, even in the kitchen, the cafeterias. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, coming up.
Caroline Cooper, Four Shell Lane, Norwalk High School. I just wanted to say thank you to the board and for the new change, for this meeting in this format. I think it's a wonderful new format, and it's highly educational and informative, and I think it gives all of us lots of food for thought before the board gets to vote. And I think that your staff did an outstanding job with the presentations, and I am also very excited that you're really looking to target and help those disadvantaged kids and close that achievement gap. So I just wanted to give you all great kudos for the new format, and we should all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. This is very interesting, and appreciate all the public comments as well. Chairman, it's a motion to adjourn. Mr. Cassinis, is there a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned.